Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the June 29th, 2022 special meeting of the Daytona Beach City Commission. We're happy to have each of you with us tonight. Before Ms. La Magna reviews the procedures for tonight's meeting, we would entertain a motion to excuse or to accept Commissioner Cantu's special meeting circumstance.
So, move. Take it.
I have a motion from Commissioner Reed and a second from Commissioner Traeger. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, six zero. Welcome via remote, Commissioner Cantu. Ms. La Magna, may we have the procedures for tonight's meeting?
Okay. So, this is a special meeting of the city commission to discuss the Bridgeport Heights River Approach Pre-Suit Settlement Agreement. And for item number three is the public comment section, and speakers will be allowed to speak for three minutes. The speaker's sign-up sheet is available outside the commission chambers in the lobby, and at 5:45, the speaker sheet will be taken up and presented to me, and no additional speakers will be taken at that time. So, if you want to sign up to speak, please make sure to do so before 5:45.
Okay. All right.
And I'll go ahead and do a roll call.
Yep, roll call, thank you.
Commissioner Traeger?
Here.
Commissioner Strickland?
Here.
Commissioner May?
Here.
Commissioner Cantu?
Here.
Commissioner Henry?
Here.
Commissioner Reed?
Present.
Mayor Derrick L. Henry?
Here. At this time, we will move on to our presentation, and we will commence with a presentation and overview from our city manager, Mr. Bob Jagger.
City Attorney.
City Attorney.
You got rid of me?
What? Like, what?
Used to the city saying city manager.
Bob, I'll switch for a while.
I don't know.
No, no. We don't want no switch.
The legal would be problematic.
All right. Well, good evening, everyone. The purpose of this meeting is to consider a pre-suit settlement agreement. It's entitled a pre-suit settlement agreement for special warranty deeds and repeal of right-of-way vacation for the Bridgeport Heights subdivision River Approach. This action, or potential action, rose out of a vacation of right-of-way by the city a number of, well, more than a year ago now, and the intent in resolving this potential case would be, of course, to avoid the cost and uncertainty of litigation. So, what I'd like to do is present a one-minute video that IT prepared that will familiarize everybody with the area, and then I'll follow up by going through the agreement.
All right.
And as you can see, it's partially paved and continues on to the edge of the water. All right, very good. So, I'll walk through the agreement at this time. Everyone, of course, has a copy in their backup as part of the agenda. The agreement contains a number of recitals or whereas clauses. It is referenced in the recitals that France is the record owner of the property at 2320 South Halifax Drive, which is on the south side of the river approach. The Tofanos are record owners on the north side at 2314 South Halifax Drive. They purchased the property from the Richies after the city vacated the right-of-way. In 2019, France and the Richies had applied for the city to vacate that right-of-way. I should also point out, and as pointed out in the recitals, that there is a plat which originally dedicated the right-of-way to the city. It's from 1926. And the plat itself states that Bridgeport Heights Incorporated is a corporation organized and existing under the laws of the state of Florida, and that they do by hereby declare that the area shown, and if we could pull up the plat just for reference, the area shown dedicates all streets, avenues, roadways, alleyways, parks, as shown thereon, to use for the use of the public forever. This is actually the one other, yeah, there we go. So, this, I know it can't be read, but it'll give you some idea of what we're dealing with. This is the 1926 plat, which contains the language which I've just read. The purpose, I'll probably state at this point, the purpose of the deck action would be to determine the rights of the city and the public at large as dedicated in this plat. And so, we would try to determine through the court if the suit were filed, what the city's rights were with regard to the vacation and what the impact of the vacation was on whatever rights were created by the plat to the public. On May 20th, 2020, the city commission approved by resolution the right-of-way vacation. At that point, as a matter of law, the rights in the property would have transferred to the adjacent property owners, the Tofanos and the Tofanos as a subsequent purchaser, and also France. Moving on to the agreement, the terms of the agreement are, number one, and I'm just going to go in order, that France and the Tofanos agree to transfer by special warranty deed the subject area. And Joe, if we could go to the next slide? So, the subject area, of course, being the river approach. This is the entire length from the edge of driveway on South Halifax Drive up to the river itself. And I'll talk later, but that property is divided into two sections, one as a conservation area and the other section as a driveway access easement. But moving on through the agreement, in addition to the special warranty deeds, there is consideration provided for in the agreement, which is intended to cover the owner's costs and legal expenses in applying for the right-of-way vacation, and these costs include, in addition to certain legal fees, also costs for such things as the survey, and this is all part of your backup as well. Survey work, utility relocation, application fees, and attorney's fees, not only for the application for the vacation of right-of-way, but also in preparing documents which would be relevant to this agreement, such as the conservation easement and the access easement. The total amount of costs and fees, which would be considerations of matter, would be Moving on through the agreement, we've got certain terms here related to the closing, the time of closing, and the documents required. Paragraph five references repeal of the resolution which vacated the right-of-way, so the property owners have agreed to a subsequent resolution by this commission that would essentially vacate the right-of-way vacation, or repeal the right-of-way vacation. Paragraph six is a reference to the owner's access easement. It states that the access easement is to preserve France and Tofano's rights to use, construct, and maintain the driveway and vehicular access to their properties across the eastern portion of the river approach, as you can see. You may have noticed in the video that the houses owned by France and the Tofanos are actually situated so that their driveways front the river approach. And so, they, as a matter of law, would be entitled to some access across that river approach, even though it wasn't provided for in the original platted subdivision. So, we do recognize that right of access through a owner's access easement in the agreement. Paragraph seven deals with the conservation restrictive covenants, which would be part of the deed. The purpose for these restrictive covenants is to limit the river approach to a pedestrian use by the public and require the city to maintain and preserve the property in its natural state in perpetuity, in accordance with state and federal regulations and the agreement. So, in furtherance of that, there are a number of paragraphs. Paragraph A here states that the river approach shall be reserved for pedestrian use only, and the city reserves the right to construct a sidewalk, boardwalk, or pathway across the conservation area consistent with any legal requirements. And I would note that there are some mangroves on the property which do have a protected status. In addition, the city would be prohibited from constructing basically any sort of vertical improvement on the site, with the exceptions of signs, or bollards, or other sort of improvements to prevent vehicular access. Secondarily, there would be no dumping or use of the property as a landfill. The remaining limitations here go primarily to preserving, rather, the natural condition of the site. So, we can't destruct or remove trees or vegetation that are protected. We can't excavate or dredge or remove gravel and soil, et cetera, from the property. Can't conduct any activities which would be detrimental to drainage, or flood control, or water conservation, soil conservation, fish or wildlife, et cetera. Acts which are detrimental to the natural land or water areas would be prevented. Acts which are detrimental to the structural integrity or physical appearance of the property are also prevented. And finally, parking of any motor vehicles or equipment, except for necessary maintenance by the city, are prohibited. And I would note that that would apply to the adjacent landowners, as well as to the public in general. There is a clause for specific performance in the event of breach of this agreement by either party. Next, in paragraph eight, there are basic rules of use for the river approach area, which have now become part of the city's park system, and these rules are very similar to other rules that we have in our other parks. The river approach is closed from one hour after sunset until one hour before sunrise. That is consistent with the city's ordinance. There's no trespassing, of course, after the park is closed, no alcoholic beverages, no parking, no motor vehicles, no fires, no glass bottles, no pets, or rather, pets kept on a short leash and cleaned up after them, no littering or dumping, no camping, as defined by city code, and no loitering, as defined by state law. The city is required to make several improvements. This is in paragraph nine. Number one would be signage for the rules of use that we've just gone over. Signage regarding the conservation easement, which we've gone over. And finally, bollards or other barriers, and I would include signs in that to prevent vehicular access by the public. The remaining paragraphs in the agreement are essentially what we call boilerplate. They are, you know, as-is clauses, force majeure clauses, et cetera. So, I don't need to go over those in detail. That is essentially the agreement. You can see in the picture here that the forward half, if you will, the eastern half, if I'm looking at that right, is the driveway access area, and the area in pink is the conservation area. Are there any questions with regard to the wording of the agreement or the proposed language? All right. At this point, we have another presentation to be made by the representatives for the landowners.
Mayor Henry, Commissioners, I'm Michael Schnapps Tyler, Cobb Cole 149, South Ridgewood Avenue in Daytona Beach. Together with my colleague Jessica Gao, we represent the parties, proposed parties to the settlement agreement, Alana France and Don and Sherry Tufanio. Ms. France and Mr. Tufanio are here tonight. Would like to thank Mr. Fiercher and Mr. Jagger for giving us the opportunity to present tonight and for their efforts in working with us on the proposed settlement agreement. I do have a PowerPoint presentation that I'd like to go through briefly, and then just have some remarks to follow up on what Mr. Jagger said about the agreement itself. This is just a timeline that kind of gives you the dates that Mr. Jagger was talking about. We, you know, follow the city's process and procedure for right-of-way vacations like we have on other projects. We met with the city's technical review team for a pre-application meeting before we went forward. We did verify that the city didn't have any maintenance records for the river approach, for the area, and that was consistent with, you know, what our clients had told us, that they had been mowing the grass, trimming the landscaping, maintaining the areas since they moved into the area in 1996 and 1999, respectively. We were able to flip the plat, so on this figure, you can see the plat in a little more zoomed up detail. The areas in yellow are the true approaches that were created by this plat in 1926. There was an ocean approach, which was created on Minerva, which is operated today by the county as a paid entrance ramp, and then you've got the river approach off of Halifax Drive. We did look up the legal definition of approach in Black's Law Dictionary. It's a walkway or path. So, in 1926, the idea was we're going to have a path to the ocean and a path towards the river. But as I said today, the Minerva Avenue approach is operated as a for-pay gated access point by the county. This next slide just kind of shows the river approach over time. When Mr. Jagger was referring to the bollards, in our eyes, the idea was that the diamond signs that you see from the 1996 photo here would just be replaced. We have a 1996 or 1999 photo on my left, our left, and then on the right is a 2007 photo where you can still see one there. We believe during hurricanes and storms, they came down and they just weren't replaced. So, the request in the agreement is that those same signs just be put back up. So, this is a look at the condition of both approaches today. So, on the right is the ocean approach at Minerva. You can see the gate there. It's closed at night. You have to pay to bring your car through there. On the left is a photo that is similar to the video you saw. I believe the date of that is 2001. It's not what it looks like today, it's current condition, which we could show in the next slide here. And the next set of slides are going to kind of show you what some of our clients are concerned about with respect to use of this area and the need for the rules. So, I have a laser here. I know, not too good with this. But on the left, it doesn't work on the screen, you'll see someone has got a bucket of something. They're throwing it over into the area on the left side of the property, close to Ms. France's property. We don't think any type of dumping, whether it's just water or something that shouldn't be dumped, you know, should be occurring out there. In the middle, you'll see the bollards or the utility poles from the previous paragraph of previous photo, I'm sorry. Someone came through and actually picked them up and threw them into the mangroves. The photo on the far right is a photo of Ms. France's property on the other side of the fence. Someone picked up that planter that's there in the middle and threw it over onto Ms. France's Another concern our clients have is improper use of the approach by vehicles. The photo on the left is just a bike, nothing really to be concerned about in that photo, but the next photo will show you what folks are doing with their bikes out there. In the middle, that's an ATV or motorcycle riding around at night in the evening. Actually, I believe that happened the day before the manager actually met us out there. We had the camera video was still saved, and we were able to show the manager, Mr. Driscoll, the video of the person riding around their bike in the evening out on the grass area. These are some more fairly recent photos. So, as you'll see on the top left, someone has accessed the river approach and is sitting on the seawall on Mrs. France's property. The photo on the top right is someone who has gone through the river approach onto Mrs. France's property on her seawall and is using a net to shrimp or something out there. There's an arrow pointing. The bottom-left photo is two people who have come around. You can see one person in the arrow and another person slightly to the right as well on the property. And then, on the bottom-right corner, someone has ridden their bike through the river approach into an area that's below the mean high water lines. You can see the area's submerged, you know, it's not wet there, and so they're actually in Mrs. France's property, riding their bike around there. The next slide is a video we have showing something that happened just a few weeks ago with someone who came through regarding the mangroves. There was a silt fence put up there. There are some young maturing mangroves. The gentleman came out there, took down the fence, and then stomped around on the mangroves to help pat them down. That's the end of the video. But I think this, can move it. Okay. So, this next slide kind of show what the mangroves used to look like. So, the photo on the far left shows the mangroves fully intact and filled in all the way across the river approach is on the bottom of the screen. Ms. France's property is on the top part of the screen there, but you can see that those mangroves are pretty well-filled in. The photo in the middle is from the river looking back towards the approach, and you can see the mangroves are in there lush and full. And then, the photo on the right is a photo that was taken just after the stomping of the mangroves. We did report this to the Florida Department of Environmental Protection, so there was some discussion with compliance assurance program with respect to DEP. The two suggestions were replant as you feel necessary and work with your local government to post signage on the property, which is one of the terms in the agreement. And this exchange with the DEP happened after the draft agreement was put together, after it was signed. I believe our clients signed the agreement back in May, so you've had a signed agreement now for the better part of two months. So, what this slide essentially does is summarize what Bob, Mr. Jagger spoke about in his presentation about the settlement agreement and what it does and it doesn't. And as I mentioned at the last commission meeting when I was here, there's really three important interests that are served by this agreement. First is the right of access to the public to the area. That's the most important issue here. That's the most important item here. We know that. And since the right-of-way was vacated, our clients haven't done anything to trespass anyone, prohibit anyone from accessing the area. So, what this agreement does is it returns the river approach to the city by agreeing to reverse the resolution. It's as if the resolution never happened. You will adopt a resolution vacating the right-of-way vacation, as Mr. Jagger described it. Our clients are also going to give deeds back to the city so that no title company can state that our clients have some type of interest in the property. You're getting a deed back from these folks, just like you were buying a piece of real estate. So, again, the effect of that action is it makes it as if the right-of-way vacation never occurred. Again, this is consistent with what our clients have done since the right-of-way vacation because they haven't prevented anyone from coming out there. Everything that you've seen in these videos actually happened after the right-of-way vacation occurred. Second, as Mr. Jagger mentioned, our clients do use the paved portion of the property to get to their homes. So, the settlement agreement provides for a very basic access agreement that allows the owners to use the pavement to get to their homes, and a request to reinstall the directional signage that was there in the 99 and 2007 photos. We think it's reasonable to put the signage up there, because as you'll see from the county's ocean approach, they gated. It's blocked, and it's closed at night. We didn't want to put a fence up there, wouldn't think putting a gate up there was reasonable. We thought just a couple of those post-signs are perfect for the situation, similar to, I think it's called either Sunrise or Sunset Park, which is in the shores. If you keep going south on Peninsula, you'll see a similar area to this, right before the turn to the public shopping center. As I mentioned earlier, our clients have maintained the area, including maintenance of the pavement, the grass, landscaping, removing trash. We know that there have been several comments prior to tonight about how the area has been maintained previously. So, as part of the right-of-way revacation process, we'll work with city staff to make sure that it's part of your regular maintenance areas like any other property that the city maintains. And so, that third interest, so, you know, access to the public, access for our clients to get to their homes, and then protection of environmentally sensitive areas. That's the third interest. So, the agreement provides for protection of the river approach and environmentally sensitive areas, including the mangroves, which are protected under Florida law. Our clients learned the hard way about the importance of the mangroves. One of the landscapers that the clients hired cut the mangroves too short, and so they worked with DEP. They had to pay a fine because they were cut too short and worked to restore them to an improved condition. Our clients want to ensure the continued protection of the mangroves, and we believe that some just very basic rules, no dumping, no littering, no loitering, establishing reasonable hours for use, all allow that to happen. Again, we believe this is proper because of some of the incidents that we've seen. With respect to the overall agreement, our clients did not apply for the right-of-way vacation to take away people's rights. We communicated that point very early on from the beginning when we received a letter from concerned residents. We requested that we work together on a set of guidelines and standards for use of the area. The response letter that we received was that they wanted an easement instead of establishing standards. Since that exchange, we've met with the manager, we've shared information with the city, and we've talked through the settlement agreement with the city attorney and Ms. Metz earlier this month. We think the agreement before you all is better than the easement that was previously requested, because the property is being turned back over to the city. It's no longer in private ownership. It's back in the city's ownership and control. It goes back to being a right-of-way. In return, the requests from the clients are fairly reasonable, posting signage and restoring those old signs that were there before, and following the rules and regulations regarding the mangroves. Mr. Jagger did bring up the fees, about $3,900 of the fees are for what we would need to do to implement the settlement agreement, prepare the easements, get the survey work done, recording fees and things like that. The remainder of it is mainly the surveys that were required as part of the right-of-way vacation process, and then our clients, after the right-of-way was approved, had to pay for utility relocations out there. So, the request is if these utilities are going back to the city, they just get reimbursed for those actual costs. Just to conclude, you know, our clients did go through a legal determined process to vacate the right-of-way and allow for continued driveway access and maintenance of the area. We know that the residents prefer that the property be held in public ownership instead of private ownership, although pedestrian access has never been restricted out there since the right-of-way vacation was approved. We've worked with city staff to create a solution that we think is protective of both the public interest and our clients' ability to access the property, and this also removes the possibility of further litigation, as Mr. Jagger mentioned, the possibility of damages, takings claims, and equal protection claims that could be arising in not just the declaration that's filed, but anything that goes along with that as well. And again, the settlement agreement allows this access to, for pedestrians to continue in perpetuity. You would own it, you would maintain it. It's back in the city's hands and control. So, with that, that's, you know, my remarks for this evening. I'm happy to answer any questions that you all have. We do respectfully request your approval of the agreement, and if we could have just one minute to rebut any public comment, we'd appreciate that, but we know we're on a tight schedule tonight and want to respect that. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We will begin to hear from the residents at this time. Let us keep in mind that we want to hear from you, but we also want to get to a conclusion tonight. So, we'll call for the first resident.
Our first speaker is, I'm sorry, our first speaker is John Nicholson, and on deck is Randy Gray.
John Nicholson, 413 North Granby Avenue. There's no doubt that we screwed up, all right? What they're asking and what the residents are getting, it appears to be exactly what they had prior to the unfortunate giveaway. The only difference is they're asking that we protect the mangroves. After the meeting last Wednesday, I went out, walked the property. They absolutely need that driveway. There's no way that it can be reconfigured to get to their garages without that portion paved, so that absolutely has to be there, because there's no way, if you go from the street, they can't access their garages. So, they would have to go through their living room to get to the garage, which is absurd. So, I think this is the best we can do. I think it gives everything that the residents want with some more protections that we have. And what we end up having to do is we have to maintain it from now on. We didn't maintain it before. We will have to maintain it now, and I ask the city, because we're not really good at it, Derrick, to maintain the property as well as the people that maintained it for the last 50 years, because it's been like this for 50 years. For 50 years, it's been fine with everybody, just these last few when that vacation was vacated. So, everything goes back to normal. Hope so.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Randy Gray, and on deck is Lee Kizner.
My name is Randy Gray. My address is 2301 South Halifax Drive, and I would like permission, because we didn't get a presentation from anyone on our side, if I could yield my time to Sarah Metz.
She's already signed up to speak.
She's signed up, and I'm gonna get you.
But that's okay. I would like to yield my three minutes.
We don't do that, but yield your three minutes to Sarah. Anybody else want to do that? Let's get to it.
I would like to yield my three minutes.
What was your name, sir?
Daniel Stone, 2240 South Halifax.
Okay. Okay.
Is that it? I want you to feel denied, okay?
Okay.
I'll yield my time as well.
What was your? Okay.
I'll vacate my time as well, Bryce, pretty much.
So that's one, two.
I believe it's pretty fortunate. I'd like to yield my time.
Okay.
All right.
Okay. Did Lee Kizner want to yield his time?
I'll give her the rest of my time if I'm not in it.
Yeah, just, just hold your time, you know, you, you want your time.
I'll take my three minutes.
Then I'll let, our next speaker is Monica Paris.
Monica Paris, 120 Seespray Street. Good evening, Mayor Henry, City Commissioner, City Manager of Beach, or City Clerk Lemanga, and to everyone that makes the wheels turn in this beautiful city. Tonight, we're here to discuss the Bridgeport Heights River Approach Pre-Suit Settlement Agreement. Let me first start by saying that I am here as a concerned citizen that has looked over all the documentation regarding this matter. From what I've gathered through public knowledge, two applicants requested that city abandon a riverfront approach due to the fact of vagrants occupying the premises. The paperwork was then passed through the hands of multiple city staffs, such as the technical review team, property evaluation team, public works director, planning board, and city lawyer. After all documentation was reviewed and processed, it was put on the agenda for a vote before the mayor and the commission to make a decision on this matter during COVID with no public comment since city hall was closed. Upon the suggestions of the city staff, who are considered specialists in their respectable field, provided guidance to the mayor and the city commission, who then voted in favor of moving forward with this request. I'm surprised that my commissioner from Zone 1, where this riverfront approach is located and who has lived in Daytona for over 60 years, wasn't aware of the classification of this land and also voted to move forward with abandoning it. My main concern is that this was public land and wasn't in the city's jurisdiction to give to the applicants. If an error was made in distinguishing this as public land verse being city property, it could be understandable since things do happen, which leads me to then ask why the proper procedures for city property weren't followed, which would require placing a city placard to notify the public of public hearing of this matter, and the mailing of letters to homeowners located 100 feet from the location being advised of this request was not done. What I want to know is how did something like this happen in the first place? How could this application go through so many city staff hands and no one recognize the error? How did this get past the city attorney? We are now here at the point where we have spent multiple hours of staff's time, your time, and the citizens' time on something that could have been avoided if it was properly researched in the beginning of the process. We are now in the position of having to negotiate a settlement with the applicants with taxpayer money. Who is going to be held accountable for this? If it wasn't for the concerned citizens of Bridgeport Heights and the multiple citizens that are actively involved in city happenings, this would have gone unnoticed. A local newspaper article said, "One of the many jobs that our city manager feature was challenged with is to ensure that our city government has the right, in the right, the right people in the right jobs. This is one of the most delicate challenges that any new manager faces, and the problem is magnified by the fact that feature is also taking on a city that's had one manager at the helm for nearly two decades." So I'd like to know if anyone's under review in regards to this at this time. The citizens of Daytona Beach deserve better, and without new city manager comes a new error. We are not going to stand for the status quo any longer. As the mayor says, "Together we create solutions and overcome challenges," but we, the citizens, need to have answers to how this happened and make sure it doesn't happen again. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, our next speaker is Lee Kizner. And on deck, we'll take Frederick Brown. And it's messy, if you don't mind, I'll leave your 18 minutes at the end.
My name's Lee Kinsler and I live at 2318 South Peninsula Drive. Hello, everybody, nice to see you again.
Yes, sir.
Following up what Monica said, here we are again, and how did we get here? Because we failed repeatedly in a bunch of different situations and a bunch of different people have failed. Regarding the legal matters of this, that the proper protocol and procedures weren't followed from the beginning, nobody was informed, there was no placard sent up, none of that stuff was done. In regard to the, the videos that you showed earlier, the one with the orange bucket, that was me, I was returning live shrimp to the river after I took my kids fishing. I have a little bubbler that I put on it and the ones that are left over, I like to put back so they can make more shrimp. I would like to know what exactly the conservation agreement says, that if it says that you can't go to the edge of the water for the children to fish. That's my big deal with this, and so my neighbor Harry can row his boat down there with his wife. If the conservation agreement says that you can't walk past the high water line, I think that's a violation of our riparian water rights as it is now, and I think that should be addressed. As far as where the street is, I mean, the garage was remodeled and it was part of the street where the houses face that. It was okay when they remodeled the, the garage to face the Halifax that went all the way to the river, and now we want to close it off. So I, I don't think that that's really kind of cool. Everybody has the same easement in Bridgeport Heights, everybody has access to drive into there to get to their, their house. I don't think that there should be any special easement for that, but maybe legally there's required one. The big thing is the conservation easement and, and whether the kids can go down and take their boats and, and get water for their science fair experiments and all that stuff. That's the important thing to me because it's a river approach, a place to approach the river, like I said before, for fishing and swimming. And in the 20s, it was bathing and water sports and just looking at the river as well. But don't limit it to just the, the one thing. Because the water sports that we have here, fishing and swimming and boating are huge, and that's part of what we do in Daytona Beach. And I think if we eliminate that, then we're eliminating a lot of opportunities for a lot of kids. Thank you.
So you would like to be able to fish from this approach? I mean, swim?
No, I don't want to swim there, but I want to be able to put a kayak there and I want my kids to go down and stand on the water line and throw a line in. Mr. Trager, I don't know where he's at, he was, he's been fishing there since he was a kid. All the kids, there's a guy that lives in our neighborhood, Mark, I think his name's Mark, what's his name, Brady? That grew up there? The guy that lives?
Okay.
Mark La Forge, but he, he's, he's grown up there and he counted on count that there were 32 kids in the neighborhood that used to go down there and go fishing throughout the summer and stuff. And that's, that's what that park was originally intended for the residents of Bridgeport Heights to use the river.
I'm just trying to figure out what you want that's not in the agreement.
Yeah, and I don't know what the conservation agreement states. I don't know exactly what it is. So that's one of the things that I have a beef with.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, I was putting out that the agreement, the pledge agreement does not permit fishing in any way.
So people can fish all day on, people can fish all day as long as the park is open.
You can sit down, sir.
Fishing is allowed. Let me, let me get to that.
Wait, we'll get, we'll get to any of that, but just don't talk out.
Trying to let the mangroves flow.
Okay.
Okay.
But, but, don't, don't talk out.
All right, so number one, fishing is not prohibited by the conservation easement or by the park rules.
You can sit down, sir.
Secondarily, access to the river is not denied or prohibited. So people, to the extent they can take a kayak and launch it without disturbing the mangroves, that would be allowed under the rules of the, the access easement and under the conservation easement. With regard to the netting that's out there, understand the city doesn't have a right to enter into the park at the moment. It's owned arguably by the adjacent property owners. So once the city would take that ownership back, I presume we would go out there and remove the netting and put up the proper signage to preserve the mangroves. So the netting would be removed after the city retakes ownership.
All right, sounds like good answers to that to me. Next?
Okay, our next speaker is Frederick Brown and on deck is Jim Sweeney.
Frederick Brown, 1508 Crescent Ridge, Daytona Beach. There's five key issues, which I have a real argument, and I wish I had the 24 minutes that was granted to the opposing side, but unfortunately I only get three. I also request to have access to the slide displays, and I believe the city clerk has provided you with the 10-slide presentation that I wanted to present. And what this is, you probably just looked at it and said, okay, it's a picture. Okay, what this shows you is the systematic takeover by Bud Ritchie, previous owner of the property, step by step by step, eliminating all of the green belt and taking over that piece of property. And my, one of my biggest objections to this is the fact that we talk about how the clients must have access to the driveways. Neither of those driveways were there. Neither of those driveways were permitted. Neither of those driveways were allowed under the original plaque. They were put in illegally by Ritchie in 1999, when he put the addition on, he put a huge addition on the front and turned the drive, the garage access from Halifax, what originally was, rotated at 90 degrees, built himself a nice double-wide driveway. I might remind you, who was mayor at that time? His father. Additionally, the city partner of PNS Paving was brought in by Mr. Ritchie to pave on public land, a strip of asphalt down there. You talk about what the clients want. He proceeded to park numerous vehicles down there, literally side by side, to prevent access on the park. There was also signs put down there that said that the, the property was able to be used by canoes. The city had put them up. They mysteriously disappeared from Mr. Ritchie's property. One can only suppose how that happened. Again, there's so many points that I like to cover, I have a minute left, but I want to point out the fact that I really feel that the city does not have the jurisdiction to give this land away because public land along the riverfront of Halifax River and riparian rights are governed by the state of Florida. I have pointed out the exact legislation that that is governed under in my previous I do not want this agreement to give credence to those illegal driveways, and also they did a nice presentation about a motor access, and then all of a sudden this is declared a pedestrian-only access. That was never in the plaque. That was a full access for people to bring their boats down, go fishing, et cetera. And that is now in this new agreement being taken away. I also object to the fact that the city is being told they cannot do vertical improvement. In other words, if you want to put a nice walkway down there so we can go fishing and stuff, that would be considered vertical improvement. That is wrong. And I oppose this agreement as it is written. Again, I have much more to say, but no time to say it in. Thank you.
Mayor, if I may, a walkway, a pathway would be allowed to be constructed under the agreement.
Okay, sir, you're. Okay, so Ms. Metz has the final 21 minutes. They have been yielded.
Okay, thank you. Sarah Metz, 444 Seabreeze Boulevard, Daytona Beach. The main issues that I have with this agreement are that the underlying action was void, and therefore the agreement itself would be based on a void action and have no legal effect. It would invite additional litigation, and it does not put the property back where it was prior to the void vacation that occurred on May 20th of 2020. I have a few options or suggestions to resolve the issue. Had we filed the declaratory action in January, when this commission asked Mr. Jagger to do so, such a simple and straightforward issue would likely have already been dealt with, which I know this commission is trying to do, and I commend you for the actions you've taken so far. One of the issues that I see in the proposed settlement agreement is the attorney's fees. There are no prevailing party attorney's fees in a declaratory judgment action. If you followed this through, as you said in the beginning, in January, even if you lost, you still wouldn't be paying the $13,000. You might be paying some costs, but those are minimal in a declaratory judgment action. So why is the city using taxpayer dollars to pay for the vacation of the right of way when, if the vacation of the right of way had been done correctly, the answer would have been no, and the city still wouldn't have paid those attorney's fees? Let's go ahead and cross the attorney's fees out of the settlement agreement since there's no legal way for them to get them. The only way to get them is this negotiated settlement. It's simply not in the interest of the citizens of Daytona Beach. Additionally, when I spoke with Mr. Jagger and Mr. Snapjiler and discussed some of the legal issues with this, Mr. Jagger made the point that, well, the, the court might find that there's unclean hands. However, the issues in this case don't meet the legal elements of a defense of unclean hands. Unclean hands, according to Florida case law, and I won't cite the statements for you, but it's the 4th District Court of Appeals. Unclean hands requires action that is akin to fraud. The purpose of unclean hands is to discourage unlawful activity, action that is sneaky and deceitful, unscrupulous practices, overreaching, concealment trickery, or other unconscientious, unconscientious conduct. I don't think that's what the commission did. I don't think that's what the city did in this case. There's no chance that an unclean hands defense would win in a declaratory judgment action. You didn't have unclean hands. You made a simple mistake. There's a very simple way to fix it. And here's the mistake that was made. The action was void. The action was void because you didn't follow the requirements of the Land Development Code. I have a long, long list of those that were not, that were not followed. For example, first and foremost, under the Land Development Code, it was the Supplement 16 that was in place at the time and the one that the court would have to look at. Under Supplement 16, the vacation of a right of way had to be done at a standard public hearing. Table 3.2, Table 3.3E1, Table 3.3, excuse me, 3.3F outlined those public hearing procedures. And in the procedures for vacating a right of way, Section 3.3AA.3E says you have to have a standard public hearing. But the public records show, the agenda shows, the video shows, what happened? It was a consent agenda. I think every one of you on the dais right now knows that there is a difference between a consent agenda item and a public hearing. There are specific requirements for a public hearing, and that did not happen. An additional issue was notice of said public hearing. And notice is particularly important in this case. There are people in this room who are likely within the 150 feet necessary to get the letter from the property owners who were required to give that notice. Had those people within that 150 feet known that this was happening, we probably wouldn't be sitting here today, and we probably wouldn't have spent the inordinate amount of time over the past two years trying to rectify this wrong. We wouldn't have been there because you would have heard from both sides throughout the process. But that notice didn't happen. The public records will show it, the testimony in a declaratory action as to whether notice happened will also show that. I've spoken with Mr. Snapjiler, he's agreed that didn't occur because of a question whether that had to occur, since it didn't appear in the table how long in advance of the meeting you had to give said notice. But that doesn't negate the requirement of giving notice. And when a court has to decide how long should you have given notice, reasonable notice, something, anything, but that didn't happen. Another reason that it's void, to be eligible for vacation under Section 3.3AA2. The piece of property must be a public street right of way. Today, you heard from Mr. Snapjiler, a very good attorney here locally, that he looked up the definition of what a river approach is and guess what it's not? It's not a street. There was no authority, there was no notice, there was no public hearing. What does that mean for you? Because you already know, and you've already decided as a commission, that what happened wasn't done the right way. You already know that. But what does that mean? Void? Well, the 5th District Court of Appeals, which is the court that has precedent over our local area, which you likely already know, the court in the 5th ECA says, "It's void, it has no effect." So what does that mean? That means that the subsequent actions taken on it also have no effect. That means a warranty deed is giving the city nothing. It means nothing. So why have we negotiated such a settlement agreement that provides attorney's fees, that gives away legislative and police power that you are not allowed to give away to the owners in perpetuity on this conservation easement agreement? Just above paragraph seven, I marked this thing up, by the way, it's taken quite some time, but just above paragraph eight, "The environmental conservation restrictive covenant shall indicate, shall indicate that it cannot be revised, modified, or terminated without the prior written consent of the parties or their successors and assigns." That means that you or your successors and assigns do not have That means that you or your successors and assigns do not have the legislative and police power, whatever power you need, in order to govern that piece of property anymore. You have to get the decision of the people who own the adjacent properties or their successors. That is not the use of the power of commissioners that we have voted into office. You can't give that away. So this is not a legally appropriate document. It invites litigation. It's void. It invites litigation, and it practically and politically does not make it easy for anybody. You're adding a lot of things in here that are not necessary. I don't need an easement to back out of my driveway onto public land. It's just there. And they didn't need an easement from the time that that area was paved to present. So they don't need that either. It's unnecessary. You're giving away power. You're giving it away unnecessarily, and all because this is void. They can't, you can't take this action. So my suggestions here, and I would like to mention a couple of things, too, before I get into some of these options to resolve. This is a picture, the gentleman in the back of the room there, Harry Oakley. This is his son, and I don't know what year. I know they moved there in the 70s. This is his son. And his son, Mark, the caption says, "Mark, Oakley and Bass, five pounds, eight ounces of happiness." Do you know what this little boy, Mark, back in the 70s, didn't have to deal with? Whether or not his dumping shrimp back in the river was considered dumping on an environmental conservation easement, I'm all for the mangroves. In fact, of that strip of properties there on the riverfront, I'm the house that has them. I haven't cut them down in front of my house. Other homes have. They're still in front of mine. Yes, they're there. I'm all for the mangroves. But don't give away your right to govern them. Allow the kids to go to that property and use that property. Allow the bikes. That might have been me on that bike. I don't know. I do bike down there. That's not hurting the mangroves. That's not hurting the grass there. What I'm asking you to do, I'm giving you a couple of options here, some suggestions. Number one, because it was void and is not a taking, if you were to repeal the resolution, I would ask that you simply repeal Resolution 120, 2020-120. If they believe it was a taking, let them bring suit. Let them argue to you why it was done properly and why they have this legal right to the property that they claim. I haven't heard why it was done properly yet. So let them bring that to you if they think that they're going to win that. If that's not something the city commission wants to do, then you can go ahead and proceed with filing the declaratory action. Don't be afraid of a declaratory action being litigation. I had a case against Mr. Jagger, and I can confirm, he's very good in court. Very good. He won. Don't be afraid of it, because there are no prevailing party attorney's fees, and the documents that will be before the court very plainly show this is void. The governing case law in the 5th DCA, and in fact, argued by Rob Merrill of Cobb Coal in front of the 5th DCA, against the City of Daytona even, Daytona Leisure Court versus City of Daytona Beach, argued by a partner of Mr. Snapjiler, successfully argued. Florida follows the majority view whereby measures passed in contravention of notice requirements are invalid, null and void if not strictly enacted pursuant to the requirement of Section 166.041. 166.041, and in fact, the definitions of the Land Development Code for the City of Daytona Beach say that a vacation of a right-of-way, even if you could have done that on this piece of property, should have been done as an ordinance. It wasn't as an ordinance. It was a resolution, and it wasn't noticed. So there is no reason for this city to enter into the settlement agreement. File the DEC action. Let the court determine it. At that point, no favoritism is being shown to anyone, and no one could argue that there would, there was. And why is that? Because you're letting the court decide whether you took the right action or not. And although Mr. Jagger has said a declaratory action could be based on the, whether or not, what rights were vacated, if any, I would say, show him the public records, show him the agenda items. It's void. Don't agree to the settlement agreement. You're giving away the power of the commissioners to decide. Since 1926, there have been no issues at that property, other than, as you see, the PowerPoint, and those aren't issues. You've had two people come up here and say, well, I was just using it as I've always used it prior to it being vacated. Unsubstantiated photographs are not the type of evidence that you should make your decision on tonight. Make your decision based on the fact that what you did was void. And that's okay. We all make mistakes. I'm not here to pound the pavement on that issue of making a mistake, but it's easy to correct. Another option would be to enter into a settlement agreement, but simply put things back to the way they were. No conservation easement. There's no need for an easement for them to use that paved portion of the driveway, because guess what? They can, just like any other member of the public, can back out onto a public piece of property. There's no issue with that. And there is no legal requirement for the easement there. In terms of any restrictive language, if the city later wants to take up the proposition of rules and regulations, let the city do that if it's deemed necessary, but don't do it as a requirement of the landowners on either side. In a settlement of that nature, basically, and I have a lot of issue with the whereas clauses, because they don't actually state the facts. But a settlement of that nature, you could pay for the costs associated with the vacation and the repeal thereof. You could pay that. What I looked at, which was delineated, was a $1,764 amount for utility relocation and survey work for $2,275. There is some case law that I found that if the city does repeal an action that it took, and the homeowners took actions based on that, that they would be entitled to a refund of those costs. That's, to me, that would be a fair way of approaching it. Give them back the costs that they incurred in order to take the utilities out or move things, do the surveys, et cetera, and then have them give it back or file the DEC action. The final alternative, and one that we've avoided or tried to avoid as long as possible, because we see that the city commission is trying to do the right thing, and that is members of the public file the DEC action. There's no reason for that, because in the DEC action, what position would the city have to take? Either you did it right, or you did it with unclean hands, or you, what position would the city take? So why not just rectify it in that easy way? File the DEC action, get a court to deem it void, and just move forward. Or enter into additional negotiations with the homeowners for some amount of money to recoup their costs associated and give it back with no other restrictions. Are there any questions?
So you want no easement and no restrictions. Which restrictions are there that you don't want?
My issue...
What are the restrictions?
Yeah, my issue with any of the restrictions are that there have never been any restrictions. If you are going to put restrictions on there, do it as a body, a commission. If you want to put the...
Well, what other restriction?
The conservation easement restriction is a problem for me personally. And the reason that I have an issue with that is because it is vague. It itself is ambiguous as to what exactly can happen. I understand that Mr. Jagger has his own position on what these words mean, because he and Mr. Snapjiler drafted the document, but that doesn't mean that a member of a public is going to know exactly what that means. For example, Mr. Snapjiler and his clients say that dumping is anything is not appropriate. Well, is dumping shrimp back in not appropriate? So now we're creating a situation with a document based on a void action that invites litigation over what exactly does it mean? And Mr. Kinzer pointed out the fact that there are certain things in here. The environmental conservation restrictive covenants are not actually a part of this agreement. They are something that the city attorney and Mr. Snapjiler and his clients will decide what that is in line with these here. So we don't even know what that says. I think the biggest issues before this commission right now are that if you take the action, it is not an action that is a legal action to take. You would be taking an action that gives away and delegates your legislative and police power over this piece of property, and I have the case law to cite to you on that. And you're doing it based on a void action, so you're not actually getting anything in return for what you've negotiated. What kind of sense does that make? It's not practical? It's not right? Just say no and move forward. DEC actions are quick. In this case, I don't understand why it should take any time. We should be done by now.
How are you with the hour before and hour after, sunrise, sunset? Was that always the case?
There were no rules posted on the property. I personally, I don't want to see my neighbors have issues with people. I don't want to see Ms. France and Mr. Tifanio have people entering on their private property. I don't agree with that. I think people who are doing that, there should be, if the city wishes, some sort of delineation.
We do have some of that.
Should it be part of the settlement agreement? No.
Okay.
Is there something the city could do that could delineate the public and private property? I'm sure that there is. Perhaps there could be some bollards across that part. In fact, if you go look at the County of Volusia's past photographs, you can see that for a long time, the homeowners prior to the Tifanios actually had a whole entire line of shrubbery and perhaps even fencing that was later removed, I think in about 2014. So there are ways to do it, to keep people off of their private property, and that should be, I have no issue with that. So I think that these are things that you, as a body, can do. You just don't have to delegate your power to do it.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Snapjiler, do you have a rebuttal?
Yeah, I know. I'm just...
Good evening. I'll make this real brief. Michael Schnaps Tyler. With respect to the underlying litigation being void, if you repeal the right-of-way vacation, it's moot. It's gone. It's like it never happened. So you can't file a lawsuit claiming something you've given up and has gone away is still effective. The parties in interest have agreed it's no longer effective. It's as if it's never happened. So agreeing to that resolution vacating the right-of-way addresses that issue entirely. The word "public piece of property" was used multiple times to describe the river approach. It's a right-of-way. It's like a sidewalk is a right-of-way, just like a walkway is a right-of-way. It's a public access point that was dedicated, says dedicated to the public in the plat. That's 1926 language. It was dedicated to the city. It shows up in every record, property appraisers' records, city records, as being owned and controlled by the city, just like Halifax Drive was. And so this would return this back to the city for use. The conservation easement language is protect the mangroves. The original idea was it to be just over where the mangroves were. It was extended back in discussions with the city over protection for buildings and things like that, that people might be concerned about in the future. The language about conferring with the property owners if there are going to be any changes, that's standard in any easement or any right of access. So again, we feel the easement is absolutely necessary for access to their homes, because if it's not a right-of-way, if it's not a road, then they have an easement by necessity. So why not work it out between the parties right now? And then, lastly, you know, the language regarding the conservation easement is really straightforward. It says dumping or placing of soil or other substance or material as landfill, or dumping or placing of trash, waste, or unsightly or offensive materials. That's dumping. If someone had shrimp and put it in the river, that's, I guess, that's fine, as long as it's not soil, landfill material, trash, waste, unsightly or offensive materials. We just have the video of what was done out there. I showed it to y'all. So I think the agreement is straightforward. Mr. Jagger, your staff worked hard, put it together. It's very plain language and essentially just requires compliance with any local rules and any federal and state laws that would apply to protect the environmentally sensitive areas. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mike. Members of the commission, you have heard from residents, and you have heard from the current, I guess, we call them a property owner. Sure, sir. Sarah, take two minutes. We got two minutes. We're going to make our decision. Sure. I don't want you to feel deprived in any way. Sarah? No?
No.
This is the person that you all have chosen. You're good? Okay.
Okay.
Now, we've heard, so let us engage in what I believe needs to be a deliberation to make a decision, and we can hear from our attorney. Do you have anything that we should know from your perspective based on what you've heard tonight?
No, Mayor. I don't have anything further to add. I'll be glad to answer questions if there's anything specific.
Okay. Do you all commissioners have any questions of Mr. Jagger?
Mr. Jagger, if we go to a state of saying it's void...
I'm sorry. Say that again?
If we go to a state where we say, okay, it's void, we, things are back to zero, what is the, what do we have to do to make the homeowners feel whole again? Is there anything that we have to do, or just everybody kind of walks away?
So the suggestion was made that the city could simply repeal the vacation of the right-of-way by subsequent resolution. The problem with that approach is the property rights, if you will, have already passed to the adjacent owners. So arguably, our repeal would have no effect in the eyes of the law. So if we went forward in that direction, the property owners could, I can't, I don't say they would, but they could certainly file a taking action for the city's attempt to reclaim that property by repeal of the vacation. Now, the taking action is a statutory action. They're entitled to not only fees, if the court should determine they were taking, attorney's fees with the value of the property as well, as well as their litigation costs, such as appraisers and engineers and so forth. So really, that's what we've been trying to avoid this whole time, is that taking action. So, you know, it's nice to say that, you know, it's just void, but that requires court intervention, and it perhaps doesn't give light to the fact that the property owners may have counterclaims in response even to the DEC action. So make all these claims equitable claims, as was mentioned by Mrs. Metz, Ms. Metz, for attorney's fees and costs, just in response to the DEC action. So there are a lot of issues involved. I recognize the issues that Ms. Metz has brought up. We certainly would be on the same side of some of those issues, but as she stated, I do have a concern that the city essentially invited the error in its process if one were to agree with the arguments that Ms. Metz has presented, and the courts may not look favorably upon that position of the city.
Commissioner May?
Karis, how would the landowners feel about that if it went back to the way things were, and then at some point, the city said, look, I don't know if we want to do this, just a conversation I'm having to myself, that once it went back to that, then we said, okay, we have some sort of conservation thing as a city body versus putting it in an agreement? How would the owners feel about that? So I think part of it is, putting it in the agreement doesn't seem to be working well. If we do it after the fact, I think that works better. If it's after the fact and not part of the agreement, and then if I'm understanding, then it's up to the homeowners to sue us and prove something at that point. Am I thinking correctly? Is that what I'm hearing?
That's correct.
Would they do that? I guess they could. They would. Okay.
Go ahead. She's asking you a question.
Again, Michael Schnaps Tyler, for the record, you know, the idea behind this was to work together and come to a resolution. What, litigation is just going to make some other attorneys who are not me, you know, earn money and fight over this. It could go many different ways. This is a solution that literally returns this back to the city. I think the easement language is really straightforward. It's your city rules. Don't destroy mangroves. Don't drive cars out there. Don't dump trash. Don't drink alcohol out there. And this applies anywhere in the city, and we can work this out right now. I mean, we, two-thirds of this refers to your own ordinances and codes that apply, and another third of it reflects, refers to state law.
So would there, just Karis, would there be a problem with us doing all of those things after the fact?
That's what this agreement says. We're going to do this after the fact, and these are the tenants we're going to follow. And in our discussions with Mr. Jagger, you know, he said... And in our discussions with Mr. Jagger, you know, he said the idea would be just to put something like this in the formal document.
We would essentially cut and paste this into a formal document, which would be recorded in the official records.
And again, the, the things we, we heard about, you know, about being able to fish and walk out there and all that. I mean, as long as you don't destroy the mangroves, that's okay. But, but the minute you take down one of those mangroves, the minute you harm one of those mangroves, we're gonna go back to the DEP, go through this process again. That's why it's just better to do this now.
Yeah. One thing that came up tonight in the, in the discussion from the citizens was bicycles out in the approach area. I don't think that you all would have an objection to bicycles going out there. And generally, within the approach area, of course, as long as they didn't venture into the private property.
Yeah, I mean, I presented that.
It's not really addressed in the agreement. We could certainly add that language to the agreement to allow for pedestrian and bicycle access, if that helped clarify things.
Yeah, in my original presentation, I showed a photo of a person riding their bike. And I said, this isn't the issue. The next slide of the person in Ms. France's backyard on the bike is the issue. Using the, you can't use an approach to do something illegal. You can't, you can't use, you know, I, I can't use a city street to hit golf balls, right? You can't use things in a, in a legal way. So you can't use a city street to trespass onto someone's property. You're trespassing. You can't use the approach to trespass onto someone's property. You're trespassing. And that's why the signage is requested there too. This is where it starts, this is where it stops.
I have a question. So are we saying that the approach is just that linear line? You can't go behind their home? That's what they're saying? That's the private property?
The dimensions of the approach are 30 feet by 180 feet. And, and that is, I know what you're looking at. I know the public can't see, but it's the photograph that Mr. Brown had provided that shows the red outline. That, the red outline shown in that photograph is actually the Tufano property, I believe. The approach is in your backup. It's what I had shown up on the screen earlier.
Okay.
And there is a survey, right?
Okay.
Do we have additional questions?
I have one more. So is the main thing here, from what I just understand you to say, Mr. Attorney, is we can't, we can't void this because these are the people that we made the original agreement with, that the property's been sold and now new people live there?
That is certainly a concern from a legal standpoint. You have a subsequent purchaser who paid value for that property. So again, these kind of get to the equitable considerations the court may consider, either in a counterclaim or in the DEC action. Certainly, the Tufanos were, had no part in the application for the right-of-way vacation. I'm sorry, is it, have you got the names mixed up?
They bought it in 2019. They knew about this process and they finalized the process.
All right. They were not involved in the application process, which is my statement.
They were involved in the application process.
They were not applicants. I can say that much for certainty. I don't know what the involvement was behind the scene, but I know they were not applicants. Whether they had knowledge or not, I can't say. But nonetheless, and I don't want to make. There'll be no, there'll be no physical change to the site. The city would have the right to put in a walkway, so they could exercise that. The city would have the right to put up some sort of blockage for vehicles and signage as to rules. But other than that, there should be no physical change to the site.
In your opinion, did the city make a mistake doing this to begin with?
There are legal arguments that go both ways. That's why we have courts.
Hello?
Okay. I, I just think that we need to do whatever we have to do to put it back the way it was, making, making the, the current landowners on each side whole and making, making the residents of Bridgeport as happy as we can under the circumstances and get it back as close as it was. And, and make that the way it is right now presently, whatever the cost, because I think we made a mistake. And when we make mistakes, we need to pay the piper.
So.
Can you tell me, Mr. Strickland?
Hello?
What, what has changed? Commissioner Cantu, go ahead.
Um, I actually think what we have come up with is actually very fair. I mean, if we, they can swim, they can fish, they can kayak. If we add the bicycle, the property owner over there should have easement to their driveway. I mean, I'm one that has the same driveway as they do. But I believe everything we're doing, and I do believe they should get some of their costs back on this as well. So I believe everything that we are doing right now is.
Long process, maybe as long as a year, maybe, maybe a little more. If it were a straight DEC action, as Ms. Metz said, those tend to be a little quicker. And that might be six to eight months.
Okay. I, I don't profess to know all this legal jargon. So I'm gonna utilize my simple method. They bought the property. I know Mr. Brown talked about how these garages were done inappropriately. Where they're already done, the people need to have access to their homes. They never said that we could not, we, I'm a citizen. They never said we could not go back there, where the mangroves being maintained prior. This seems to be so simple. If we could just come to the table and say, you all still have full access, do the things you were doing, even the things we're saying you're, you can do as Mr. S. from Cobb Cole, to mess up his name, the attorney. As he stated, all of these things that we're giving them access to is what we already give access to in our parks. I, I mean, I'm sorry, I don't see, I don't see the issue here. We're still letting the people go. You know, the people can go to their driveways and go home. Let's respect the property of the people that live in the homes. Let's don't even dump anything. Can we all just get along?
Something we should be able to get over. Okay. Okay.
Mistakes.
Mistakes happen. Accidents happen. This is probably through no fault, but we didn't do enough due diligence. If there had been anything other than it said "river approach" to all the people, we did not have anything coming up that, anything had changed that to a right-of-way rather than a thing for the people in that area. I think we need to do this the simplest way, put it back together the way it was, and go on with our lives. I, I understand with the survey and the things like that, we probably should recompense them for that because that was out of pocket. We made the mistake on the application because it was not ours to give away. I mean, that plat clearly says so. It was not ours to give away. So like that other attorney said, the lady, if it wasn't done right, it should be null and void. I mean, it should not have been done in, in the first place. It was not done right, was not done by ordinance. I think they're supposed to be done by ordinance or resolution, maybe.
It can be either way, under state law, yes.
But, I mean, with pandemic, they were kind of special circumstances too. But you have to try to right a wrong. And this was a wrong.
Does this agreement right this wrong? That's what the question is for us.
I don't think so exactly, because it does put restrictions on it. And there were no restrictions before. I mean.
What restriction?
Well.
I don't really see any restriction.
For instance, about an hour after sunset and an hour before sunrise. Like the gentleman, my husband was down there for years since, since he was a kid. And, you know, he's older. In there at night getting bait food to go fishing. I mean, this would not be allowed.
So in some, in some parks that we have, I think a few whiles, a while back, by maybe sea breeze underneath the bridge, we set a sunrise to sunset hour before. We did something like that.
I mean.
That's normal.
Yeah, we actually have an ordinance.
That would put a restriction on it that wasn't on there before.
Well, we have an ordinance which closes all parks at this, at the same time as stated.
But this does, I don't think this would go under the idea of a park because it was a river approach given to the people of Bridgeport Heights. It was not a city park. Really nice of the neighbors to keep it up all those years. I mean, I commend them for doing that.
And we're taking over the maintenance, so it would have to be considered under our, a city park now.
Well, if, if this was a null and void thing, it would not be a park because it never was a park.
It seems as though, if I'm understanding both sides, as a city body, citizens are either going to be, going to court for one or the other. Someone's taking us to court. Does it, does it feel that way to you? That I think if, if one doesn't, the other one will. So I'm not sure where that leaves us exactly. But we've got to, I guess, pick a side. Or is there any other negotiation based on tonight? Or are we definitely just split like that? Okay.
At some point, this is just crazy that we can't get this. It's so small.
I know.
I mean, and my understanding is that you don't want us to approve this because you don't think we should give them a right-of-way to backing out of the driveway. But you say that that is, they have a right to that. My understanding is that you don't want us to approve this because there should be no conservation easement. But our rules say that we have to conserve those, conserve those mangroves. I don't understand what else is in this that we're, we're taking away from someone. To me, all of the rights that you have are already there. And, and I'm gonna ask, I'm gonna let you tell me. Because I want to know the answer. You come on up here, Lee. This is time, I'm asking a question. Tell me what else we are taking away from you as a resident or a citizen, other than those two things.
Oh, sorry, Mr. Kinzer.
Yeah. Make it quick. Go over, tell me.
Public versus private. You're giving to private citizens the right to govern versus the public's giving you the right as the commission to govern. Ms. Traeger said, as correctly, it's an approach. He defined what an approach actually is. This is like taking people who live next to a playground and saying, you get to decide what happens on that playground in perpetuity. Let's say that one day you decide, as Mr. Whoever said, to build a, a small dock. And you talk to DEP as a city commission and you say, you know what? We would like to provide a small dock for people to go walk out onto so that we can preserve other mangroves in another way. That's vertical. You can't do that. You'd have to get their approval to do that. And, and, and that is something that there, obviously, yeah, sure, there's an argument that it says something different, but that's the point. If there's an argument for ambiguity in the document and you're giving away that power, if you want to do that, do it. But do it in a public forum. Don't do it in a private document.
So if we.
You answered a question.
If we took that out.
I think that that's, I, I, I think that we've, go ahead, Lee.
Let's see, where was I? The other thing, I don't think anybody said anything about not being able to drive down there. The solution to that is to extend Halifax down past the driveways to where everybody can access those driveways. Then it's public street. And then the park continues at the end of the driveway. And realistically, if it's gonna be a park, there should be a handicap access parking space. And there's room for one. And the only person that would ever park there would be somebody with a handicap sticker. And currently, as it is, with the logs in the way, nobody that's handicapped can get through there. And that's been one of the beefs the whole time, as everybody knows, because Harry, my buddy across the street, can't roll his rowboat down on his dolly and take his wife fishing anymore. So that's the whole reason I'm here, hand for my kids. And, and those questions are the ones that aren't answered. He's got a little rowboat that he bought from somebody, and it's on a little two-wheeled dolly. And this guy's back there in the back. I saw him roll it down the street a few years ago before COVID, all the way down to, and you know where I live, all the way down to the water, take his wife fishing, and then they pushed that boat all the way back up the street. That's pretty cool. That's why he lives there. He's the guy whose son caught the fish there in 1977. It's been used as that forever. And the conservation agreement, I'm all for the mangroves. I smoke cigarettes, I field dressman, put the crap in my pocket. I don't throw anything away. It's shrimp, live shrimp. If that's dumping waste, then I won't do it anymore. But those things like that, I mean, it's our neighborhood. We don't want it trashed. We pick up stuff in the neighborhood. I pick up crap in the street all the time, walking around. So we're not saying that we don't want anybody to park. I don't care if they use it for their driveways or driveways empty out there. Or as for other people that have thrown stuff in their yards or something, I can't say to that. I've never done it. I put up a six-foot fence around my house.
All right. This is my time, and I was asking a question. You answered my question.
All right. Thanks.
This was my time. I was trying to speak to my point.
Okay, two, two key issues. Their agreement says pedestrian only. It was not considered that before. Pedestrian only would mean no bicycles, no kayaks, no canoes. The city used to have a sign up there that said canoe launch, which was removed. Okay? So it was previously for non-power boats, John boats, canoes, kayaks, et cetera. I would like to have access. It also says, it also says.
Included.
Michael, did your client have?
That's not what it states in the agreement.
Wait, I want to get it clarified.
Yeah, I know, we're kind of running around here.
You're done. I was just asking a question, Mr. Brown.
Yeah, yeah.
It's my time.
The intent, the intent was to allow anything you can carry on your back to come in there.
You can have a seat, Mr. Brown. He's done with your time.
But I have one other point.
That's what's meant by pedestrian.
I'm trying to get my question answered so we can move on. Make the point quick.
Yeah, it's very quick.
It's time is up.
Again, a key issue that's still not discussed is the illegality of the driveway. You're setting a very dangerous precedence here where you're saying it's okay for someone to build something illegally with no permit and then justify it in a legal agreement later. And that is a very real danger. As Sarah discussed, you're giving away your own rights. You're also opening challenges for anyone that builds anything illegal and then getting it authorized through this type of agreement.
We got it.
Thank you.
What, what we're trying to do tonight is to solve a problem that I personally believe is simple and we are allowing the fact that we have laws and have rules to keep us divided. And we've been divided over this for too long, over simple language and words that I don't think this is gonna impact what you all are able to do down there. And I want to get it to exactly to allow you to be able to do the things that you were able to do before. If it's taking a canoe down there and taking a kayak, and you were able to do that before, I want to see that be approved. I also believe that these people have a right to be able to back out and use that as, as their driveway. Let's go in there. And I think we should come to a term and let this come to a head.
Just real, real brief. First, I know a lot about building docks and marinas. But one, this is a really important point. You have to have a sufficient upland interest to get a dock permit from DEP. So this land can't be owned by everybody in Bridgeport Heights and get a dock built out there. You have to have, under the DEP rules, you have to have a sufficient upland interest. Right now, the only people who have a sufficient upland interest to build docks are the people whose homes are along the river there. They get to build docks out there. If the city owned, you know, a sufficient upland interest and could work with the DEP on permitting on their parks and things like that, that's different from this, right? What, what was described here is something that was owned by the public and everybody. You cannot, as a matter of law, there's not a sufficient upland interest to build that. With respect to the mayor's point, again, as long as you don't destroy the mangroves, do whatever you want out there. That's, that's what this agreement says. But mangroves under state law are protected. They're important. And, and we've seen the destruction out there, and that's what the agreement says. Restrictions don't define what you're allowed to do. It defines what you're not allowed to do. So you can ride a bike out there, don't destroy the mangroves. You can dump shrimp out there, don't destroy the mangroves. It's that simple.
Do you agree with that?
Yes. And that's why I say we could add language that say bikes would be allowed, kayaks would be allowed. We could add that to clarify, but, but Mr. Schnappstall is correct that we've addressed things that are prohibited in the agreement. We don't address things that are allowed. But if we, if you'd like us to add language that you're allowed to do these certain things, we can do that.
Things are, they're illegal by law to destroy the mangroves, correct? You can't do that anyway. So does it have to be in there, considering that it's already a situation by state?
Well, we, we have that in there, of course, but, you know, we go, we do go a bit further. So we prevent other types of development in there in order to, like, and also dumping and et cetera. So we're doing more than just protecting the mangroves. We're preventing development of that property in a way that it's not currently used. So the city can't come forward at a later point and turn that. and turn that into a slingshot or, you know, other more intense public use. So, so that was the intent in, in limiting those uses so that at some point in the future, the city couldn't further develop that property, you know, put in a large gazebo, turn it into a wedding chapel, anything like that, which would all be public purpose uses for that property if, if the commission so chose.
Could I, could I ask another question? Seventeen here says, "The agreement does not create any rights, claims, or benefits inerring to any person or entity other than the party's successors and/or assigned." That is not a party to the agreement. Does that mean the landowners being a party to the agreement and the city being a party to agreement? That goes on forever and ever and ever?
So I suppose to answer your question, yes. The agreement, the restrictions in the agreement go on in perpetuity. In other words, they can't be changed without the agreement of both parties.
So even 100 years from now, another city commission wants to do something, heirs or successors or something of the other party can say, "Uh-uh."
Right. But you have to keep, keep in mind that the rights created by the plat, as the plat states, go to the public in general. So there are not only rights of the city in this case, rights of the neighboring landowners. There may also be rights of the community, at least within the subdivision. So this agreement only addresses the rights which may exist between the city and the adjacent property owners. But as I've stated many times in previous meetings, the landowners may have rights by virtue of their deeds or by virtue of the plat, which they can assert as well. But that's not of the city's concern.
Okay. Yes?
Quick question. Is, is, is the rowboat on the dolly legal under the agreement? What he was just talking about?
It's, it's not, as long as it's not motorized, as long as it doesn't destroy the mangroves.
Thank you.
Okay. It seems to me we, we are at a point we're going to take a vote unless you all have anything else. Here's my point. Seems to me that the residents of Bridgeport Heights have kind of made a decision that, that you, you want things done a certain way. And they want a small, in my opinion, change that you're not willing to give them because you don't think that they ascertain this in a rightful manner or legal manner. And to me, that's the essence of legalism in allowing ourselves to be mired in, 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 by law. When in society, we could, and we are, but we, we could address this if we wanted to. But you don't want, no, both sides don't want to give. They've, they've come to me, and your party has given, you know, and, and maybe we, we gave something that wasn't ours to give away. But because I was, was wrong in my decision, I have decided from my perspective, not because I believe you're right. I believe in the grand scheme of things, you're, you're too mucky. This is just my perspective, and I'm talking now. I just think you're, you're, you're asking for something that you, you should give something and to give more in this situation. But because you refuse and because, in my opinion, we were wrong, I'm going to vote personally to approve it as you wish. So I'm going to be on your side tonight. But it's not because I believe you're right, but I believe that it's maybe the right thing to do. So we have to vote on this.
I would like to make a motion that--
We need a motion.
That we repeal 2020-120, declare it null and void.
Okay. You have a motion?